Good evening, everyone. This is the Groton Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, May 21, 2018. At 7:00 PM, we have announcements and review of the agenda which is occurring, followed by a public comment period. We have up to three minutes to come to the microphone and make some comments, and we will try and answer them if applicable tonight. Followed by the town manager's report, where we will talk about the select board's agenda schedule, consider ratifying the town manager's appointment of Kevin Barrett to the Trails Committee, consider adopting the Groton Police Department rules and regulations, not Rule 9.4, for tattoo and body modification, consider appointing the following individuals to the scholarship committee, Berta Erickson, Jeffrey Cromer, Erica McConnell, and other business, followed by ongoing issues, where we have a multitude of unresolved issues that are still before this board, and we will have an update on those, liaison reports, and minutes, which are none for this meeting, because we're all caught up for the time being. Under announcements, a couple things are going on. First of all, tomorrow is Election Day. In addition to the local elections, where we have a slate of candidates for local town offices, we also have eight non-binding referendum questions on the legalization of marijuana and various types of uses that would be allowable in the town of Groton. And this is an advisory vote to the Board of Selectmen to see how the town feels about these various eight issues that are before you on the ballot. In addition to that, a couple other announcements. Next Monday will be Chief Donald Palmer's last day as our chief of police. I think on behalf of the board and the entire town, we'd like to publicly thank him for the level of professionalism that he has brought to our department and the outstanding work that he's done within the community, for things that he didn't have to do but chose to pick up and do, work at the senior center, work at the schools, and many other tasks. Donnie's been exemplary and has showed great leadership skills through his ranks across the entire department and across the entire town. He will be sorely missed, and there's some very large shoes to be filled by the search committee and the Board of Selectmen, but we certainly want to wish Donnie the best of times during his retirement, and may he have peaceful, enjoyable days in the future. Any other comments by fellow board members?
Is he, does he usually march in the parade?
He is marching the parade, but this will be our last meeting that we have.
Right, but so the town will have an opportunity to come out and cheer or applaud and take him to the parade.
He may march, or he may take another mode of transportation.
Maybe he'll be, you know, riding in like a horse-drawn carriage, like a royalty or something like that.
Could be a chariot. We shall see. But yes, the Memorial Day Parade is a week from today, so it's a great event. Come out and watch the parade, and go to the old burial ground, and honor our veterans and those who have been lost serving our country. So, that's it on that front.
If I may, I think many, many people know, but we should use this pulpit to make sure more people know, that the Groton Police Department was not always held in such high esteem here in our town, and that there were some real challenges, and that Mr. Palmer is largely responsible. There was some work done before, as I understand it, but largely responsible for that enormous turnaround. So, it's not just a great guy doing great stuff, but it's a manager who took a difficult situation and turned it into an enviable situation, which is a very, very hard task and one that we should all be grateful for.
True. So getting back to the elections, tomorrow the polls will open at 7:00, and we'll close at 8:00 PM. The two precincts, I believe, 1 and 2, is that correct? 2 and 3 vote at the Groton Country Club, and 1 votes over at the Senior Center in West Groton. So, get out and vote, and speak your minds tomorrow. And I guess while we're still doing announcements, on a final note, this is Selectman Jack Petropolis's last meeting as a member of the select board, and I would like to see if there are any comments for Jack for the six years that he has served our town. So, anybody have anything they'd like to offer?
This is the town?
This is it. This is announcements.
Well, I will comment. This is, actually, is an announcement, that it was a meeting of the nonprofit council this morning, which is something that Jack actually, I believe, had a large part in initiating and setting up, and, but Jack chose to take early retirement by not showing up at the meeting this morning, despite having promised that he was going to be there to help me take over the reins.
Guilty, guilty as charged.
That's nice, Jack.
No, it's not.
Anything else, Becky?
Not right this minute.
Okay. Anything, Allison?
Well, I have a couple kind of impromptu notes that may kind of shake things up a little bit. Like many of you, I first learned about Jack when he pulled papers to run the Board of Selectmen several years ago. And I did some research, and I liked what I saw. He was gonna, you know, look for solutions outside the box, shake things up, ask questions. This was really exciting, so I supported him. Little did I know that within a few weeks, as my role on the school committee was, that all of that inquiry would be coming directly at me, and that was not what I had in mind, Jack. I don't know what the future holds for Jack. I'm sure we'll continue to see him here at these meetings, at town meeting and such, relaxing for a while, then probably continue to serve in some fashion, perhaps with the nonprofits. Right now, it looks more like probably Friends of Prescott and Indian Hill Music, but we'll see how that unfolds. You know, we don't always see eye to eye on things, but I think that that healthy debate is a good thing, and that I know that, you know, your intentions are always, always good, whether you're provoking change, preventing change, depending on the issue. Your heart's in the right place, and you're always looking to improve and better our community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think we should make it clear to those who might be watching our meeting, that we were advised that what Jack would really like is a roast rather than, you know, nice sincere tributes. Maybe he didn't think he would get any sincere tributes, but...
Question is, does he deserve them?
But so...
I'll say, I'm not sure I said I would like a roast. I think I always said, it said, "Would you tolerate a roast?" I said, "Do whatever you want," pretty much the vote. Okay.
I would agree with that.
Once again, contrarian.
So, one of your former comrades on this board sent me an email that he would like read. So, it says, "Congratulations and best wishes to Jack on his service as a member of the board. As he sets out into a new set of challenges, I'm sure Jack will remind us of his own words. I know I'm right. Other people's opinions don't affect me. If I have to, I will find another way. I am sure we will hear a lot from Jack in the future of Groton. I sincerely hope so. Juan Voyage, Stuart Schulman." So, that's what Stuart had to say, and I want to say that overall, it's been a great pleasure serving with you, Jack, and that I think you've brought a tremendous, high level of professionalism to both this board and a tremendous amount of accountability to town government and sustainability moving forward through tough fiscal times, and that you're stubborn, you're pragmatic, and overall, you're logical even to yourself, but not always to others. But I think that you stick by your convictions, and that's an important thing in life. And it's been a pleasure in knowing you and serving with you, and all are welcome, Jack, including you. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Josh.
So, as I thought about it, I think, Jack, that one of the things that you will be remembered for is actually what you did before you joined this board with the fire station, taking that process, kind of picking up in the middle of a process that had gone awry and not, yielded some disappointing results, and doing it in a way that I think is a great model for how town government should work. Although, there was this one little factor about when you took over, somehow the size of the fire station expanded quite a bit. So, that's part of what you get to take credit for, I guess.
Yeah, I suppose.
And the, certainly you'll be remembered for the "all are welcome" markers, and I think that's a really far-reaching initiative that you brought to the town and pushed through and against a lot of resistance. Not everyone was happy. You probably heard, I think we all heard at a meeting, someone said, "Well, I actually think that they just look like gravestones." So, probably there are some people who will remember them and associate you and make that connection. There's some joke there that I don't know how to make. But I think that you, that you will be remembered for that.
Thank you.
Any pardon comments before, well, to follow up with, Jack?
I didn't really prepare anything, but a few things have occurred to me. First, I have a lot of people to thank. First, thank you, Josh. You and I have cooperated, schemed...
Schemed.
Yep. Done a number of, worked together in a number of ways to make a lot of things happen, period. When I needed help, because I knew that something was, needed to be done, and couldn't get a lot of support to do it, we found a way to get it done. Sometimes, not in the majority, but we found a way to get it done. When a minority can get things done, even though there's pressure not to, that's, that's important. That's, that's a fact. Another thing you did was, we demonstrated that you don't have to always get along to be effective together, and you don't, and you don't have to, I'm sorry, you don't have to go along to get along. We battled each other here, and nonetheless, after it's all said and done, after you've screamed at things here that really I can't repeat, we continue to do well, both as selectmen and as friends offline. I once heard people talk about our congress as being dysfunctional, and woe for the good old days, when congressional reps used to go out and have drinks together after, in Washington. And when I think about it, that's exactly what we do. We, we are aligned on a lot of things, battle like dogs on some things, and at the end of the day, we go out, and it's all good. And that's, I think, I'd like to offer that example to the board, that it doesn't have to be that we get along here. It can be that we disagree vehemently here, but as long as we respect each other, and at the end know that we're out trying to do the right thing, we can trust each other a little bit more, no matter how much we disagree. I think it's a really good model. I want to thank other people, too. I want to thank Mr. Bud Robertson for help along the way in a lot of issues with regard to various sort of business-like practices. Your support on some of these things have, again, made more power than just one selectman, and made that, made, helped bring things forward. We can talk about, we can talk about the fact that we are now setting goals for our budget guidance. We can talk about the quarterly reports that we get that help us to know that we're on track, any number of things, and you've been really helpful. And then, I want to thank the very many people that have, over time, said, "Thank you, and you're doing the right thing," because it is not always easy to do the right thing. And getting that help and that feedback is really important. There was a time, Josh will remember this, when this board didn't want to have a personnel board, in spite of the fact that town meeting had voted to say, "We want, we want to have a personnel board," and this board refused to do it. And this was an example of something perhaps Stuart is referencing. I knew that it was wrong that we were not having a personnel board, I felt, and I was ready and willing to do anything that it took to get a personnel board reinstated. And only because there was support expressed was I able to persevere to get that done. And I think it has been nothing but good that has come from having it done, but I would not have persevered had people not provided support. And so what I think my message here is, is for people in the community, if you want something done, or if you want your select representatives, select board members to push for you, don't be silent. Talk to them. Tell them that, what you believe. Support them when you, when they're doing things that you appreciate. Don't sit back and think, "Well, that's just the job." It's not. It's hard, especially when it's controversial. And if you have something that you're not really pleased about, come and tell them that, too, because that's the only way that they know. It's very easy just to get one side of an argument and then come back, come here and say, "Well, the only phone calls I've gotten are for this." And that's because you didn't call and talk to them about the other side. Tremendously important to provide that support. So, all in all, I would say, I cannot say that I've had fun, but I can say that I have, that it's been an important time for me, and I feel like something good has happened, and I thank you all for the opportunity, especially to the community that put me here. Thank you.
And one last thing. I invited all the town employees to come say goodbye to you, but...
It's okay.
At any rate, that was a joke.
It was a good joke. It was really good.
So, thanks, Jack, and moving on with our agenda, we have time for a public comment period. Jack Rizden has something to add, or say?
Last week, this is Jack Rizden, 01472, the ugliest sister town. Last week, I watched this show on television. It was awful. Everybody's talking over everybody. It was just maddening to try to listen what's going on. People have got to talk one at a time, and talk when you're pointed to, not interrupt. There's a lot of interruptions last week over all this conversation, and it's, it's just maddening when you're watching it on television. And I haven't got time to be here every week. I have things to do till dark. Boy, I took time off to come tonight to bring up the subject for the second time, so I'd like to see it start for the other people also.
I'll take some responsibility for what occurred or not, and certainly the board has heard what you've said, and for a while, we were pretty good at it, and hopefully the next chair can do a better job of maintaining that. Any other comments? Ms. Ellen? Bud?
Yes, Ms. Ellen Mainstreet. We have a perfectly good assistant chief or deputy chief or something. Why isn't, why wasn't he considered?
Yeah, we'll let the town manager take that from you.
Okay.
The charter sets forth the process in which the position of police chief gets filled. It requires the town manager to conduct a search and bring two names, at least two names, before the Board of Selectmen. Even if the Board of Selectmen wanted to appoint the deputy police chief, they couldn't just do it without having at least two names. So I'm going through a search process right now to fulfill the requirements of the charter, and I will be bringing, I'll be updating the board tonight on that. Bringing at least two names to the board.
Is there any, is there any way that people of the town can encourage you or put in their votes or something?
Encourage me?
No, encourage the deputy chief or whatever, it's not very realistic.
There's a process going on right now, and within two weeks, two or three weeks, I'll be bringing finalists to the selectmen. At that point, the public can weigh in to the Board of Selectmen.
But can they weigh in before and just like make a comment?
You can make any comment you'd like. You can send a letter to the search committee, to all the members of the search committee, encouraging them to consider...
Well, then, consider me telling people to please, if you want, please encourage the selectmen for the deputy. Also, get out and vote tomorrow for the senior center, please.
We're not on the search committee, just so you understand that. It's separate from the Board of Selectmen.
But you were on the final say, aren't you?
The selectmen will make the final decision on who will be chief.
But is there a selectman on the search committee at all?
No, there is not. There is not.
So they have to send a separate thing to the search committee? They not know that?
That's what I'm trying to say to you.
If you send something to the selectmen, it'll get to the search committee.
Okay, you sure? Okay.
Send it to the selectman and the town manager, and he will make sure that it gets forwarded to the entire search committee.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other comments from anyone? Seeing no comments, time to go to the town manager's report.
Just before we go on, when we were talking about Memorial Day, I went back and checked what the instructions are to march in the parade, and we're to be there at 8:30. Do you know who on this board will be there? Not you. John, you're going to march with us?
Soon on the record, yes.
All right. So the invitation is open for you and you to park at my house if you would like to.
Oh, that would be nice. Thank you.
That's 8:30.
8:30 at Legion Hall or Field or whatever.
Very good. Thank you.
And Barry should know that he can park, too.
Well, Don, maybe you can send Barry an email. Thank you so much. Any other comments? Seeing none, town manager's report.
Chairman, the Trails Committee has requested that I appoint Kevin Barrett to the committee. I've made that appointment. I'd ask the selectmen to ratify that tonight, please.
Any motions?
I move that we approve the town manager's appointment of Kevin Barrett to the Trails Committee.
Term due to expire?
June 30th, 2019.
That's part of the motion.
That's part of the motion.
Seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, after last week's discussion on the new proposed rules and regulations, I discussed with the chief, and we proposed that the board adopt the following rule, which is similar to what we did, but we took out the wording or any other personal expression as dictated, as discussed by the board last week. I believe I sent you out the entire rules and regulations so that you can see how this fits in, and I'd ask the board to consider adopting this modification, this rule, this evening.
Questions from the board?
I was happy to see this changed. I think it's better this way.
Any further?
I'd like to credit the young lady who came here and brought this to our attention.
Right, right.
Evidently, it's a, a young woman who's on break from college, with her, here with her mom, and they were here to talk about Prescott, so she was unaware of this issue, and, and she just picked up on it during our discussion. And I just think it's wonderful, and I think it just sort of demonstrates how many eyes can really help to improve a process.
No doubt. Motion?
What is it? I move that we approve...
Rule 9.4.
Rule 9.4, tattoo and body modification.
Of the Groton Police Rules and Regulations.
Police Rules and Regulations.
Is there any... Sorry, go ahead.
Well, we second it and then do this under discussion, your question.
Second.
Seconded, discussion.
Is there any reason that this is coming forward now?
Yeah, Donnie wanted to make sure everything was in order before he left.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
No. What?
That's two noes, and that's two ayes. So, in the case of that situation, that fails.
Can I ask you?
What, yeah.
I'm just interested, I'm not challenging it, but it's useful if we have, especially if we end up with a stalemate like this, it's useful to hear the issues and the arguments. Maybe there's an argument that would cause me to vote no, and maybe you have something that we could help, we could change your minds about.
I explained myself last week. Would you like me to do it again?
I don't think I would.
I think I would. I mean, that's why I asked.
I think that freedom of expression is a good thing, and that as long as there's something that's not offensive in terms of swastika or something that would be put on to somebody's visible and officer's visible part of their body, I think that that freedom of expression should not be suppressed.
How can you suppress that? You can have a swastika according if you don't have this rule.
But it's not an interrupt, especially Mr. Rizden here.
Especially since I'm speaking, and I promise I won't interrupt you. I know you're not happy with this decision. However, feel free to bring this back when you have a five-member board, and maybe you'll get an affirmative vote.
Right, I don't think it's going to be coming back.
Well, that's fine, but that's my position on this, and that I don't want to prohibit it. So, that's where I stand on this.
Can I just follow? Have you considered, and Josh, I, I get your point. I think it's a completely valid point. Have you done that in consideration of the, the unique sort of role that police and other forms of, I hated the word used last time, military or whatever that word was.
Military organization.
Yeah. But the, the need for highly regimented groups to have standards that are different than that of the public and the civil liberties, I don't know, hedging that goes along with that, is that, did you think about that, too?
I did.
Okay.
Allison, any comment?
Um, no, I mean, for me, I guess I'm, I'm, you know, within an inch on either side of kind of the middle on this one. I, you know, to me, I guess tattoos and things have become so commonplace that I'm not sure that it's the problem that it might have been decades ago. You know, I certainly would object to certain offensive kinds of things. I guess I'm just not, if, if there were, if I felt like there were a compelling reason or a concern that this were being done now, I might be able to support it, but I'm not sure, and I can't remember what the phrase was, Josh, that you just used. I don't, I'm not sure for, for me, and maybe I just don't understand, that there is a compelling reason for the police to, to be as conservative as we're kind of forcing them to be. You know, one of the concerns that I have is, is that I want the police officers and the police presence to be part of the community, to be approachable, and I'm not sure that prohibiting tattoos, hairstyles, earrings, makeup, you know, that that's in keeping with making them approachable for all generations at this point.
I think we've sort of demonstrated that we're all on the same continuum, at least, when we looked at this language and said, "This language is troubling." That language is part of the same continuum that you're talking about. It's where are you willing to draw a line, or are you willing to draw a line? I think you've just said, "Your line is different than, than the line," perhaps that Becky and I might, "are individual lines, not that we share a line."
It might have something to do with, I work with a lot of individuals that have tattoos. And actually, many of them are my employees, and I don't ask them to cover their body and cover their arms and, and hide their tattoos. It's a freedom of expression, and I don't believe that we should suppress that, even amongst our police force. So, that's just my feeling on that. Ms. Ellen, I'd like to...
Can I just ask a question? I wonder if either of you would make a distinction between piercings and this, these other terms that I'm not even sure what they mean, branding, scarification, and dental art known as grill art. Would you be comfortable prohibiting those?
Branding, scarification, and dental art, while on duty, I would be comfortable in branding.
Why is that different than tattoos?
Because when an officer walks up and smiles and says, "Hey, you having a nice day? Please give me your license and registration," it could be offensive and scary if they might have some dental art. However, the tattoos have become, as Allison has pointed out, much more commonplace in society, and to me, I don't find tattoos offensive.
I think to me, it's about where that, that line kind of goes, and, and kind of comfort, you know, to me, I guess some of this is community-dependent. So in Groton, you know, I personally would be comfortable saying, "Okay, no, no dental art," but if we lived in a different community, that might be part and parcel of our everyday experience, and it would be reasonable. I guess, you know, to me, I'm also familiar with the idea that there are all kinds of rules put on the books in various situations, not, and I'm not saying here in our municipality necessarily, but then are enforced with some judgment or, you know, more leeway is granted than, than the rule perhaps is written to include, but where there hasn't been any indication that that's the intent. You know, for me, the banning the wearing and display of tattoos just in general isn't necessary, so it's not something I'm ready to support at this moment.
I think you heard our rationale, Jack, and whether you agree with it or not's a different story, and...
Well, I would have asked also to hear, just because it surprised me. I didn't...
And for one, I'm certainly comfortable, you know, with you guys presenting a case to try and change my mind or, you know, as well. It's not, you know, I think I indicated very early on that I'm, you know, it's a spectrum, and I'm certainly not at one end by any stretch, so...
My recollection is that last week, Mark, you said that this is fairly common in surrounding towns, is that...
Surrounding police departments, nation, national police departments. This is not anything that you will not see in, in departments, and I, for one, think that this is just a very reasonable rule. I think tattoos on police officers, whether it's a freedom of expression or not, I don't think is, is appropriate. I think the police chief is trying to do this to, to clean up the books before he goes, and I, for one, don't want to see a police officer pull me over and come up with tattoos up and down his arms and, and nose rings and everything else under the sun. I think it's inappropriate. So I, I support this rule, and I'm really surprised that the board isn't adopting something that I think is just a normal standard... that the board isn't adopting something that I think is just a normal, standard issue. So, that's my two cents on it.
Ms. Allen?
One more question. Can you vote for this, or do you have to, is it, are you a tie vote? Tie, or cut your chair?
Of course I can vote for this.
Okay.
He did vote in fact, so currently we're two in favor and two opposed.
I mean, I'm not adverse to bringing this back and modifying this. You know, just before, Bud, you commented, what if you happened to be in the Marines, and while you were in whatever country, you decided to get a tattoo, and that tattoo prominently went from your knuckles up your arm, and all of a sudden, you wanted to have a career in the military, I'm sorry, not in the military, but non-military, but you wanted to come work for a police department, and you had that tattoo on your arm. That could technically prohibit you from getting that job before you adopted that, and I don't think that's necessarily fair. So...
Are people in the Marines allowed to get tattoos?
Yeah.
I thought that was part of what was said last week also, that in the military, it's not, they're not allowed.
You should see the tattoos of my daughter's boyfriend, and he's a Marine, because I've seen them. Judy, I'm sorry, Bud, you have the microphone. Judy, one moment, sorry.
I think the police department is different than the highway department and other departments in town that have tattoos. The police department is out in front of the public all the time, and I think that having esprit de corps is good, because I think this is a different, a different mentality when you're in that esprit de corps. And I was in the service as well, and we couldn't have long hair, and we couldn't have beards, and we couldn't have this, we couldn't have that, and that was okay, because that's what you did. And I think if a policeman wants to have a tattoo, I think then maybe he shouldn't be, maybe in this town he's not a policeman. I get worried about tattoos. You can say, who, once he puts a swastika on, what are you gonna tell the guy? You're fired? Once he puts on a, in today's society, once he puts on a rebel flag, you're gonna fire him? These are all things that, there's nothing that just allows anything. And have a, have body, your body pierced, it's just the whole thing, it's just long hair, it's just going back to the schools like they were in the 70s when there was no discipline. I mean, this is a department that in fact people look up to, they're rated highly. They're not rated highly because, they're rated highly because they're disciplined and they do the right thing in the community. They don't need tattoos to do that. If people in the younger society don't agree, they don't want police, they want police to have tattoos. For what reason? I don't know, but I don't, I don't believe police force, which has come a long way, should have tattoos up, body pierced. I just don't understand why that's a, when you go into certain disciplines, there are certain rules you follow, just like if you go into some other disciplines, there's certain rules you follow. This is one for the police department. So, I think, I agree with Mark, this is not a big, most communities, honestly, this is a big deal. For some reason, seems to me Groton has become, I don't know, it's changed everything, and this is just another thing to change. And I don't think we should change this for no reason. When we've had, we have a good police department, and I don't see the police department, unless I'm wrong, I don't see that mask about dudes, maybe they are, but I haven't heard that come up.
Allison, you want to follow up on that?
I do. I just want to say, you know, I think it's important that we're not talking about requiring police officers to get tattoos by any stretch. I think, you know, to me, long hair, beards, even piercings to an extent are temporary something, so that if you, you know, at 18 or 20 years old want to have long hair and a beard, that doesn't impact your future employment. And that would be one issue or one reason against a tattoo, you know, if I were talking to an 18 or 20-year-old. That said, the decision to get a tattoo when you're 18 or 20, I don't think should necessarily limit your employment down the line.
It does today, though, when you go to police academy, you have to have certain rules when you get in there. There are certain things you have to follow, and I don't know why Groton all of a sudden is starting to become, I don't say liberal, but it's certainly fallen out of, what I do, at least upon my view, just as I said, it's a group of men that in fact...
And when...
Who have, are dedicated to, like I said, borders free, and it's not having tattoos, I don't believe.
And next thing you know, all of a sudden, under our selectman policies and procedures, you have to shave every week, put on a jacket and tie, and wear short hair.
I think that's a history. Judy had her hand in it.
I understand that. That was just my follow-up. Judy?
I think I can understand arguments on both sides. However, things have changed a lot from when I was growing up, and now I know so many men and women who have some kind of tattoo especially, or body art, that would never even have been thought of when I was young. I think, maybe to me, because there is so much more general usage of tattoos, that I feel that it's difficult to then ban them in this way. Could you modify it to, say, you know, the branding, scarification, or dental art?
I would support that.
And not the others? I mean, I just...
It also does say, could I point out, it doesn't prohibit you from having a tattoo, it's just you have to have it when it doesn't show.
While in uniform.
While in uniform, right. So, and I guess I would also just say, this is something that our police chief, whom we were just pretty uniformly commending, excuse me, has recommended, so I want to support him.
Look, I would certainly entertain bringing this thing back and removing the word "offensive tattoo" in the opinion of the higher in authority. Something along those lines, okay? Along with banning the rest of this. I guess I would support the branding, scarification, and dental art. Look, we've already voted on this, and certainly everybody's weighed in. Judy, I'll let you finish up, but I think we need to move on, but I would like to see this brought back for reconsideration with some modifications to the language. Judy?
I was just gonna ask, when the officers in a department go from long sleeves to short sleeves depending on the time of the year, are they required to wear short sleeves?
I think there's bicycle officers who ride in the real trail, is that correct, Mark, or in other places?
They have summer uniforms.
And I've seen them, there are summer uniforms, which include shorts and short-sleeve shirts. So, we're not just talking about tattoos that extend beyond the wrist. By doing this, we're talking about tattoos that could be visible here.
But I think, I mean, the question sounds to me like if an officer had a tattoo and a long sleeve would cover that, could they wear that year-round, or do they have to go to short sleeves?
I would like to see this...
They do not have to go to short sleeves.
I would like to see this cleaned up, please, and brought back to the board.
Have to wait for the new chief to start.
Okay.
Josh, if I may, I know that you want to go, but we don't have a heavy agenda. I just want to also point out, a uniform, a uniform is not just an aesthetic. A uniform is a highly functional thing. It's an effort to bring, to create a unit that, and I think it's in many ways a great, a way to create a sanitized thing, a thing that is uniform, not clothing-wise, but that is the same, and a way of stripping away things that take away from the objective of the entity. The objective of our police department is to have an impartial administration of law, the conveying of a feeling of safety, and a feeling of fairness, and a feeling of X and Y and Z, and I think that's part of what this is trying to do. The idea that tattoos can take away from the impression that the public gets of that entity, and can perhaps have individuals within the department feeling that they're exceptional to the uniform. So, I think there's, when this comes back, I'd hope that you think about the functional aspect of this requirement. I think it's a highly functional intent that is here, not just one of aesthetics.
Not trying to speak for Allison, but I think that she's sympathetic to the concept of modification to this and having it brought back. So, we have talked about this, we've voted, we've allowed the board to continue to weigh in on the public on this, and I'd like to see this brought back, and I don't think there's a need to wait for the next chief to come on board, Mark.
Who's gonna come up with the rule, Josh, if you don't have a chief do it? Donnie's not gonna do it between now and the time he leaves, so I'm gonna wait until the new chief comes in and have him do this.
I think it'd be better if you worked with Josh on this rather than if you took us in, Mark.
This is really, Mark, is gonna take you and me probably about 10 or 15 minutes.
The police, it's a police chief rule under the statute, under the strong chief statute. The police chief sets the rule, not the board of selectmen. The board has to either adopt it or reject it, which you've done tonight. I don't have the authority to set the rule, you don't have the authority to set the rule. When I say you, I mean the board. Under the strong chief statute, it's the police chief, so...
I'll be calling Chief Palmer tomorrow to discuss it with him.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Allison?
I just want to say that, Jack, in response to some of what you were saying, that I think that there are portions of our community or of our society for whom these rules make the police less approachable and more difficult to interact with. And I don't, I don't think there's a right or wrong, I mean, this is the whole continuum. You know, and I agree that, you know, a uniform of some sort, I don't really, I don't have an issue with. I personally fail to see where, you know, a stud earring on a male officer, or, you know, kind of the two days of growth or whatever becomes a performance issue.
Look, we've weighed in on this, and certainly this will be back, and let's continue on, please, Mr. Palmer.
Scholarship committee has requested that the board appoint the following individuals to the committee with a term to expire on June 30, 2019, Berta Erickson, Jeffrey Cromer, and Erica McConnell. I'd ask the board to make those appointments this evening.
I think a motion that we appoint Berta Erickson, Jeffrey Cromer, and Erica McConnell to serve on the scholarship committee for the term to expire June 30, 2019. Settle.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I want to alert the board, let me get, make sure I get the right date here. MassDOT will be holding a public hearing at 6:00 PM on June 6th at Legion Hall on the sidewalks for 119. The public is encouraged to attend. It'll be advertised, but I wanted to make the board aware of that.
That is their hearing?
Their hearing, not us. That's a MassDOT hearing.
And does this require any permitting from the planning board, conservation or selectmen?
Nope, it's within the MassDOT right away.
Very good.
Where is the meeting?
Legion Hall, 6:00 PM on June 6th.
And I think the town manager is referring to the sidewalk conditions running from Old Air Road down to CVS and from, correct me if I'm wrong, Pleasant Street down to the Middle School?
Mill Street.
Mill Run?
Mill Run.
To Mill Run?
Mill Run.
To Mill Run.
Yep.
So, this is something that's been long awaited. People in the community have asked for this for, my goodness, for since I first became a selectman 12 years ago, and this is a good thing. And we should really thank Tom Delaney and the town manager and everyone else who was involved in trying to make this happen, and it looks like we're almost there.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to spend some time tonight, while we have time, to go through some of the ongoing issues and review them with the board, if I may. With regards to the police chief search, Ms. Allen brought up the question early, but I wanted to update the board on where things stand. The search committee has completed its work, and they have narrowed the list of candidates down to five that they've turned over to me for further review. I will be conducting a police chief's panel on, coming up in the next couple of weeks. We've asked three area chiefs to come in and sit down and interview the five finalists, or five semifinalists. They're not finalists until I release a name to the board. From there, I will make a decision on who I'm bringing to the board. Right now there are five. I may be bringing five to the board, I may be bringing two to the board. It depends on what happens with the police chief review panel. From there, the board of selectmen, once you get the names, the process that we followed when we did the town manager search and the fire chief search, I'm not sure what you did with the original police chief search, but that would be a public interview before the board of selectmen, followed shortly thereafter, the next day with the assessment center of the finalists, and then the board would make a decision after that. The question that I have for the selectmen tonight is I should be ready to give you the names on June 11th. My intention is to provide, I'm sorry, June 18th, is to provide you with the names of the finalists on June 18th. So, the question to the selectmen is, do you want to conduct the interviews in a regularly scheduled meeting of the board, or do you want to have a special night to do the interviews? So, I need guidance from the board, because once you tell me how you want to do that, then I will be scheduling the assessment center. So, I need, I need input from the board, and if you don't mind, I'd like to hear, I'm assuming John is gonna be on the board, so I would ask him to weigh in, since he would be on the board, that would be making the decision.
I'm sorry, can you just, the 18th is four weeks from tonight.
Yep.
So, if I understood you correctly, you said it's been narrowed to five candidates.
Yep.
The next step is to meet with the area chiefs panel.
Yep. That's two weeks from tonight.
That's...
Two weeks, that's within, that's in the next two weeks. We had to get their schedule.
Right. So, they have to have five interviews.
Yep.
And after that?
There's going to be a department head review of the candidates, which will be the following week, and then it comes to the selectmen.
So, once it comes to the selectmen and you announce, whether it be five or two, we should, and it was past practice is my belief, that we did do it on a separate night. As something of this magnitude should not be cut short, and it shouldn't allow other town business to be conducted at a regularly scheduled select board meeting. So, that would be my suggestion. I'd like to hear from...
So, I'm still unclear why then there's, you said two weeks from tonight.
Well, two, two weeks out. Not from tonight, two weeks out.
So, it'll take the next two weeks to do the chiefs panel?
It's when the chiefs are available, yes.
Yes, and I'm not questioning that. But then, why is there another two whole weeks before...
The following week is with the department heads, and then the following week I alert the board.
The following week at...
So, if the police chief's panel is on a Wednesday, then there are roughly Thursday, Friday, and one week to conduct, to meet with department heads, so basically seven days to meet with department heads, and on the eighth day, being a Monday, decisions, decision of candidates is presented to the board. So, really, it's seven days to do department head interviews?
Well, it's, it's the following week.
Yeah, just a seven-day lapse period, seven working days.
And then allowing the town manager to evaluate the area chief's recommendations along with his department heads.
Is there an issue with the length, Becky?
No, no, I just, when you had, I missed the department head review, and then it suddenly jumped to four weeks, and I was not clear about that.
What I would...
And after that, after we interviewed, that's when you go to the assessment?
The next day.
Yeah, so have you checked with MMA, right?
MMA consulting group is gonna do it. I have not given them a date, because I need to know when the board wants to conduct the interviews.
So, that's why we should set that now.
So, it's the week of the 11th, is that what we're looking at?
18th, you said.
Week of the 18th.
Week of the 18th.
So, if we do it on the 18th, theoretically, that's a Monday night, is that correct?
Yes.
So, when does the summer schedule begin?
You're gonna make that decision on the 4th. I'm gonna give you that.
Well, we have to, and we just mentioned we have to do reappointments before the...
Yes, we do.
You have the 4th, the 11th, the 18th, and the 25th.
So, my suggestion is maybe we meet on that Tuesday night, the 19th, to do the police chief interviews, and have our regularly scheduled meeting on the 18th. Maybe you can bring forward the reappointments. Will you be ready then, Don?
Yep.
So, bring forward the reappointments on the 18th, do the interviews on the 19th, and do the assessment center on the 20th. Just a suggestion.
That's what I'm asking.
The assessment center or something?
It's probably the most valuable tool you will ever witness in order to watch the decision-making process that a potential chief would go through based on what goes on. It is extremely helpful for every member of this board to participate and watch that.
Yeah, so...
Were we allowed to?
Absolutely. So, what I'm suggesting to you is whatever day you pick, I'm gonna need Allison and Josh and Barry to take the day off, and Becky to take the day off, and John to take the day off, because I want you here in the building.
And it's an all-day long...
It's an all-day long thing. Huh? I will talk to the gods and see what I can do, but I would...
That's enough lead time for this.
Yes. I would suggest, that's why I'm bringing it up now, so that you have enough time to plan.
Allison?
So, I guess I'm, and I sense that, for Becky, it would be helpful as well, I would love some sort of list of kind of events and who partakes of them and when they are, and, you know, to kind of try and wade through this process the first time is difficult.
Well, the process really starts with the board when I give you the names of the finalists. Everything up to that is my process, and so...
Right, but what you're saying is...
But what I'm saying is that...
What you're saying is it happens fast, and when we get the names, we gotta interview...
You don't have, you could do it the following week. You could take as much time as you want before you schedule your interviews. That's why I'm asking you tonight.
Just not getting things pushed out until July.
Understood, and I guess to me, it's also a question of, you know, if I as a select board member get a question from the public about the process, and I'm saying, "I have really no idea, because we haven't gotten any names," so sometime in June we'll get names from the town manager, that's a little... names from the town manager, that's a little awkward, I think.
So when...
So we're looking for a whole day, or...
For the assessment center.
Whole day for the assessment center.
So you think that you would have names to us on five...
I'm going to give you the names on the 18th, and then I would suggest you schedule the interviews for the 25th.
Not for the 18th?
Well, the last, the department heads are going to probably meet with them on the 14th, so I will alert the board on the 15th and do it publicly at your meeting of the 18th. You're not going to do the interviews that night. I don't know if you want to do the interviews the next day. You probably want a week to review the resumes and everything, so now we're looking at probably the 25th for you to do the interviews.
Valid point.
So if we do interviews on the 25th?
And the assessment center on the 26th.
I can't do the 26th.
Not available.
Not available on the 26th.
All right. So we're not going to do the assessment center on that date.
So is it...
Well, I tried to push that to the week before.
Right. Well, I'll tell you what, I could move the department heads up a week if the candidates are available, and I can alert you on the 11th of the finalists, and then the board can conduct the interviews, as you said, Josh, on the 19th, and then Wednesday, the 20th can be the assessment center.
Are you available on the 20th? Allison?
I can be. It's very difficult, because that's the last week of school, so there are half-days all week.
Oh, okay.
But we tape the area chief.
Available.
Yep, that's true.
Allison, is then, doing it on the 19th, is that any better for you?
No, definitely.
The high school does finals, 18th, 19th, and 20th, so students are dismissed whenever they're finished for the day.
Right.
And there are no buses until 2:30, so...
You know, Allison, we do, Mark Morse and MMA consulting group, Josh, you know this, they actually tape the assessment center. Now, it's not the same as being there.
Understood.
But you do have the opportunity to review a tape. If you have to miss a certain section, so you have to run out and grab the kids?
Right, exactly.
You do have that ability for it.
And do we need to do interviews and then assessment centers?
That's how we do it.
Do we, and do we potentially weed anyone out?
Weed anyone out in that...
Um, no, we, once I give you the finalists, we put them through both. You can weed them out during the interview and not pay attention to them on the assessment center, but we're going to send them to them.
And how long are the assessment centers?
It's usually an all-day event, six hours, in my recollection.
But is it like each person comes in for one hour, or are five people here for the day at different stations, or...
It all happens more or less in this room, for the most part. There's a couple side rooms where they do paper. I don't even know what it is that they do. But the point being is that virtually all of it occurs in this room. And each candidate has to come in and go through a various set of exercises, one at a time, same exercise, and you get to witness that.
Some of the stuff, Allison, is written. We're, you're not going to observe somebody writing. So some people will be writing while other people will be in here, and it depends on, if I bring you two, it'd be a lot easier.
Well, that's a tough time to figure.
If I bring you three.
Right.
You did five for town manager, that was a real hectic day.
Yeah, sure was.
It was a real hectic day. So you couldn't be in every station.
Right.
But you get a full assessment from the proctors and the person conducting the center, and you can read the report, you can read their recommendation, and then you can make a decision.
And this is not open to the public?
Public is absolutely open to the public.
It is.
Absolutely.
Oh, was it?
Oh, absolutely. You have people sitting in this room when I did my assessment center. We had people here when the, when the fire chief did his assessment center.
Fire chief, that's right.
So yes, it's a, it's a very open process.
Yeah, I mean, logistically, for me, I would prefer the week of the 18th, I guess, over the following week, put it away.
John, are you available on the 20th?
Yes.
John's indicating he's available.
That's what I was going to ask, does that work for you, John? And we'll have to check with Barry tomorrow.
Is there, do you want a backup date? The 20th, I mean, is like Thursday, the 21st, is that any different or better or worse for anybody?
And I think for, for me, the best thing is just to get it scheduled as kind of as quickly as we can realistically, so the days aren't filling up.
The 23rd, 21st are acceptable.
Yeah.
John, does that work for you?
The 20th?
Or the 21st? It depends on when the assessment center guy is available.
I'm going to make it work, whatever the day is.
I just need to hard-schedule it as soon as possible.
You'll get it. And Allison, I...
I'm just going to block out my personal work schedule for that day.
Yeah.
And I mean, no disrespect on the, on the process, it's just that this has been ongoing for a while, and you're right, you should know about it. So I apologize.
Okay, so then that puts us back, interviewing the night before the assessment center?
That's how we do it.
Yes, interview on Tuesday, the 19th.
So that's also...
Maybe we could start that meeting a little earlier?
Depends on the number of people I give you. If we do more than, yeah, if we do more than three, if we do more than three, would you like to start at six, do six, seven, and eight? If there's four, do you want to do five, six, seven, eight? So depending on the number that I bring forward will depend the start time on Tuesday, the 19th.
That's correct.
And what is the process? So the only thing of this sort that I've been part of is superintendent search?
So...
In terms of, so the school committee process was to have a couple of workshops to come up with standardized questions, figure out who was going to ask them of whom, so that it was all standardized? Is that typical to what?
That's very typical, and then follow-up is kind of à la carte, each question.
Yeah, understood.
A set list of questions that's asked of each candidate, and then follow-up is there, and then at the conclusion, you know, typically it's 45 minutes, and then the board gets to talk for 15 minutes, and then the next applicant comes in, and he takes some notes. But still, you know, a list of questions can be developed. I don't recall the list from 2007 when we hired Chief Palmer.
Well, we had a list of really good questions that the search committee asked them, and they're typical questions that I'm sure the board will want to hear those answers. I will forward to the board the list of questions that the search committee asked. You can go through those questions, you can add, subtract, and then I'll send out a final set of questions to the board. The answers from the, the answers from the people that we interviewed, very telling those questions. I think you'll want to ask similar questions. And I think they'd expect you to ask similar questions, because the questions the search committee asked are typical questions you would ask a police chief candidate.
Yeah, but you also want to throw some curveballs.
That's why I'll, let's, let's get the search questions to the board tomorrow, and then please get back to me.
Sliders and split fingers, too.
Huh?
Sliders and split fingers.
Sliders and split fingers.
So would we typically have like a non-televized, open-meeting workshop to talk about those questions, or do we just do this all?
I would suggest that.
And is that likely to be a Monday night, or is that...
I think you need a non-televized meeting to do it, do you?
We could do a workshop, 45 minutes or so prior to the regularly scheduled meeting.
That's a good idea.
So if we start it a little bit early on the meeting of the 18th...
Well, why don't we do it on the 11th, Josh?
I'm sorry, the meeting of the 11th. Start, start an hour earlier, and we can go through that. And then we'll have the questions developed, and as to who asks each question, we can assign that to. That's, that's the simplest part.
Yeah.
So we're going to meet at 6 o'clock on the 11th?
That sounds like what I would like to see. If that's acceptable, John? Jack, I don't mean to overlook you. It's not intentional, it's just, I hope you understand that.
I'm really sorting through it right now. I'll get back to you.
Are you okay?
If I can resolve this, yeah.
Do you need a tissue?
Huh?
Do you need a tissue?
No. Is that an open meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
The questions on the public won't be entertained. So if you think if there's an, because it's a workshop, so if you have a question you think that the board should ask, I would strongly suggest that you forward it to the town manager, so we take it up for consideration.
No, I was considering the fact that those questions could be given out to the people who are going to be kind of answering the questions, that's all.
Well, they, they've already been given.
Well, it's the same questions.
Yeah, if it's the same question, they've already been asked.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Those were good ques, well, do you mind if I ask, but those were good questions. Would you agree?
Yeah, they were good questions. We actually changed them in just a little, but they were very good questions. And I'm just questioning whether, you're right, they've heard all those questions. You come up with a whole new set of questions, and it's in an open environment, and they're going to be walking in the next day.
It's the only way the board can do it. But we will not televise the workshop from 6 to 7. So if they want to sit in the room and listen to you debate the questions, God love them.
They can.
I'll look at them and say, "Hey, that's one of the candidates."
That would be telling.
Yes.
And then they will realize that those were just trick questions.
Yes. Then they get the real questions. So Josh, I'll send the questions out, Don will send the questions out tomorrow, mark them up, and then get them back to me.
Yes, very good.
Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay.
If you send them out tomorrow, follow-up on Wednesday, assuming that we have a new select board member.
I will probably send him the questions tomorrow as well.
What, you know...
Wait till Thursday? Wait till Wednesday? I'm going to send the questions out Wednesday.
Alfred A. Norman could win tomorrow, you have to know.
I'll send the questions out on Wednesday. Don, make a note to self out on Wednesday.
I bet that's a good meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
Next, thank you for the board's diligence on that. Prescott School disposition, the meeting is scheduled with the architect and engineer and myself and the building commissioner on May 30th. So I'll have an update for the board, probably not on the 4th, but definitely on the 11th, on where things stand. Town Council...
There are representatives from, is Halsey going today?
Bruce, Bruce Alida, yep. Town Council RFP, those responses are due on Thursday. I will, I'm on, I'm off Wednesday through Friday, so on Tuesday, I will deliver those to the board, and you'll decide when you want to put that on the agenda, when you want to review them.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, or Monday, probably, yeah, Tuesday after the holiday. So I'll get them to the board on Tuesday, and then the board will have the opportunity to narrow it down to who you want to interview. We'll put that on the agenda. Maybe, Josh, if it's okay with you, the workshop of the 11th, I don't think it's going to take you an hour to finalize questions. Maybe during that workshop, you can narrow down who you want to interview for town council.
Just so you all know, you are going to be delused with a stack of proposals for town council services, and I recall that from last time, so get your reading glasses in.
Okay, but I don't think it makes sense to think that we can deal with that question during that same...
Yeah, that's a good point. I'm sorry, you're right, Becky.
That's really mixing a lot.
Yeah, we'll probably have to, we'll talk about when you want to get together on that. You're going to have to, I'll tell you what, let's see how many responses we get, and then we'll make a decision on how you want to proceed. I'll put that on the agenda for the 4th.
Yes.
All right. To discuss process.
To discuss process.
And is there, by any chance, a list of questions from the last time?
Yep. Why don't we get those questions?
Circulate books.
We had really good questions.
Yes, well, you have to re...
Yeah, we had really good questions the last time.
In all honesty, this is something you probably, if, at best, would have to do a minor tweak on, based on your review, in terms of the questions to ask, the respondents to the RFP.
And if there is a scheduled preset or in mind with dates and such, if we could get that, kind of similar to the police chief search?
We have to narrow this down ourselves, to whom we want to interview, and...
Right, I understand that. It would be helpful, you know, like Mark just threw out, "Oh, we're going to get those on Thursday, I'll get them due on Tuesday. By the time I get home, that's gone."
Proposed schedule plans on that?
It would be useful if Mark could go through these proposals before they're distributed, or at least before you look at them, and create a matrix of the relevant things that are going to be contained in all of them, and state, for proposer A, here's their rate, do they cover or don't they cover personnel issues? What, all the myriad of things that are going to be relevant, going to be present in all of them, so that you have a comparative matrix, and you can focus on some of the more subtle things. I find that to be really useful.
One of the things we found out fairly late in the game, for those who didn't read thoroughly, was that some of the respondents couldn't offer all the services that we needed last time. So we want to make sure that, you know, if somebody doesn't do zoning, or somebody doesn't do personnel law, that we want to know that, and what is their plan when an issue like that comes up? Do they have a subcontractor firm that they would engage, and who is that firm, so that can be vetted out? Just things along those lines.
The amount of the retainer, what is and isn't covered?
Yes.
The hourly rate for things that aren't covered, that's what I...
Litigation, you know.
And in the past, has there been any discussion by the board or kind of setting of criteria or, you know, kind of a checkmark system for reviewing these, so that we know in advance, oh, we're looking, you know, this is, this is ideal, this is good, this is not so good, and this is, you know, cause for rejection, kind of thing?
I think we flat-out rejected a bunch of them, did we not, Mark?
But the question is, were there some criteria that allowed that?
Did the board determine, to me, it's cleaner to determine kind of those criteria and what we're looking for ideally, before we delve into reading...
How about no municipal experience?
No tattoos.
And they respond. Would that be a criteria to kick them up?
There are any number of them that I could think that would or would not, so it's a question of whether the board...
So I don't believe, I don't believe that existed. Mark, it did not, right?
Nope.
I also think if you did do that, you'd find, just as quickly as you establish a criteria, that you'd make an exception. For instance, if you say, I want this entity to offer personnel law support, you might find that this entity, one entity doesn't offer personnel law support, but they have a resource and they have other qualifications that are so compelling that you'll choose them. My recollection is that that would be a hard thing to do.
Okay.
I really think you need to read through and you need to redline it, but I think, Mark, if you could develop some type of simple matrix in terms of along the lines of what Jack said.
I did that the last time.
You know, what's the retain, what's the hourly rate, as he said, and there's some basic checklist stuff. But when you review, you will have an executive summary as to what they do and do not do. And if, Mark, you get a chance to review it, great, but I think there's just, from my recollection, there's a tremendous amount of reading.
I understand.
Oh, man, I'm getting so many text messages about what you guys are talking about right now, I can't stay up with it.
Well, you know what? Put the phone down.
I know, I did, I just did, I just did, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we'll get proposed meeting dates on that as well and interview dates. Moving right along, signage, traffic?
Yeah, that, we'll bring that back. Town manager review policy, we'll bring back. The memorandum of understanding for the court connoisseur, we'll bring back. The proposed policy on major initiative planning, I can't remember who was going to mark that up and get it back to me so I can get it on the agenda.
That was Jack's original concept, is that not correct?
No, Allison, I think...
Allison?
Agreed to...
You proposed it.
Yeah, Jack proposed it.
You proposed it.
And then somebody was gonna take it and mark it up and get it back to me and I can't remember.
No, Allison, I'm wrong, it was the other thing that I was responsible for, I forget what it was, but you thought you would take it.
If it was me, I dropped the ball, but I don't...
If it was me, I dropped the ball.
It was not you, Allison, I was mistaken, it was another initiative that I was responsible for.
Maybe then...
I would be happy to do it, but we're going, you're gonna have to send it to me again, I'll be happy to mark it up. Give me two weeks to get it back and then we can go from there. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Can you, Don, can you please send that out to me and whoever it was, I'll take that if you all don't mind? And Jack, will you be available to discuss that?
Yep.
Once you're a private citizen?
I am, yep.
Jack Rizden.
Where is West Street?
West Street is Main Street, down on the left, across from Matisse's house, I believe.
Goes down to where Seven Hills, Ediacus.
The corner of Sacred Heart.
Corner of Sacred Heart.
Or there's Teddy, isn't it?
Yeah, it goes down to Seven Hills.
Or there's Teddy.
Well, it goes down to a place where it used to, there used to be a bridge.
Used to be a bridge.
Across what is now the rail trail. The bridge is no longer there.
Went over to the street behind Connie Sartini's house.
Yes, yes, that by the old hospital.
Yes.
Now called Seven Hills.
Okay, so, Mark.
Operational, senior center building project, depending on how things go tomorrow, we'll know what we're gonna do. If things go tomorrow and it passes, we are in the process of, we have a schedule set to move the senior center out and up to the country club for their work. The fire department will most likely deal with burning the building as a training exercise on Sunday, the 10th, is the date we're looking at, should everything pass tomorrow.
After June?
Yes. And then we would issue the notice to proceed to the contractor on June 18th and then the contractor would mobilize shortly thereafter, if everything passes tomorrow. Things don't pass tomorrow, there'll be nothing to do.
Well...
Well, there'll be some things to do in the fall.
Plenty to do in terms of bringing up code.
Correct. With regards to this particular project that we're, the new senior...
Refresh me, if it did not pass, how much code improvements need to be done, close to a million dollars?
Close to a million dollars, correct.
Everybody should remember that tomorrow. Continuing right along.
Operational audit, recommendations and implementation, I've started scheduling department heads to come in, so that's gonna kick off on June 4th, we're gonna start with the land use department review on that date. Charter approval, implementation, we talked about that earlier. Local remark to tax, that's down the road. Proposed bylaw for the permanent building committee. Becky, I believe you and Allison, we're gonna take that and mark that up.
I know that I had said something about working on that. I have done nothing.
Any help I can give you, let me know. There's no rush, it just has to come back for the fall town meeting.
You could send it again.
Right.
But I actually would like to hear a little bit more discussion about the concept of why this is a good idea.
Proposed bylaw for a permanent building committee?
Yeah.
I can't offer you one, it wasn't my idea.
It was actually my idea and the chairman of the finance committee's idea and it's just that with all the buildings, to have people solely focused on that would be in the best interests of the town. My conversations with Gary, it allows for better planning, it has better focus than having ad hoc committees that come up when a particular project comes forward. So it sort of makes sense to do it, but that's solely up for the board to decide how you want to proceed on that. So Becky, why don't you and I get together and we can talk about it some more, maybe conferencing Gary and take it from there. You and I can schedule some time with Gary probably, but I'll get that to you tomorrow. Is that all right?
Yes, that's all right. Do you have any thoughts on this, off that topic?
Do you have any thoughts? I mean, fundamentally, or not fundamentally, but just from a logic perspective, having a standing building committee makes a lot of sense to me. I just would like to see the language and the parameters of the bylaw before supporting it.
Yeah. So I think you, me and Gary getting together, Becky, I think would be helpful. Route 119 sidewalk, we talked about recreational marijuana.
What's the date on that public hearing again?
June 6th.
Six, six, at six.
At six.
Six, at six.
Six, six at six, ooh, that's not good. Anyway, that's what it is.
You want it six, six at 6:05?
6:05. Recreational marijuana, again, depending on the outcome of the non-binding referendum tomorrow, we'll schedule that on the board's agenda for discussion. Florence Church Elementary School, the school committee, it's in their hands now to appoint a building committee to look at the project and move that forward. First Parish Church, CPA funds, I mean, that's gonna have to come back at some point depending on what happens with the court case.
I just interrupted, I'm not sure why, I'm not sure that that needs to stay on our list.
Take it off.
It's really the CPC's issue based on the resolution of the court case.
Right, I don't think there's anything that we have to offer to that.
I would agree with you, thank you.
That's fine.
Are we all good with removing that from now for the list? There you go, one last thing.
Building fee waivers, I put that on just because of the whole Indian Hill thing and the board talked about maybe setting a policy on how you're gonna address that in the future, a more formalized policy. So I just put that on there as a tickle file, there's nothing pressing on it, it's up to the board if you want to address that.
I think it does make sense and also the charter has some new language about making exceptions to policies or something, so it would, which I don't...
I think it's the waiving of fees, waiving of...
Yeah, right, but I...
John and Bud, can either of you enlighten us, do you recall what that was?
There is...
There is?
Your question.
There's language in there that, there is language in there that fees be written and available to the public.
And any changes have to come...
And the changes have to come back through and be approved here.
Any mediation has to occur, be agreed in an open meeting and be available in writing that's available to the public.
That's right.
And an open meeting.
Right, so...
Has to have been born in an open meeting and available to the public thereafter. Doesn't have to be available to the public in an open meeting.
I think it would behoove us to have discussed and set a building permit fee policy for projects that are, you know, nonprofit organizations that are particularly large because there might be another one, who knows?
Well, we should have that discussion before the next one comes on.
Right.
Because I don't want to go through what we went through ever again, whether as a member of this board or a member of the public.
Sure, Kristen, so that means when I put 40Bs on my land, I can negotiate the fees?
Well, when you put a 40B on your land, if that's what you so choose to do, you have to go through the DHCD in your 40B unless it comes under the LIP project, which comes in front of the board of selectmen, goes to the zoning board of appeals, so that would be between you and them.
You still need a building permit, right? And Mr. Rizden's question is, can you negotiate building permit fees with this board? That's his question, correct?
We've set a precedent, so you may well be able to do so.
What?
Come on now.
We have set a precedent.
That's why we need a policy.
That's why we need to do this, that was my point.
That's correct.
We should deal with this sooner than later and this isn't something we should wait on.
Because it's gonna bite you. It's gonna bite you.
It may well.
I'll see if I can help it.
Well, see if we can get the dog officer to attend. Thank you. Task force to consider adding additional police officers, so this was what we discussed at the conclusion of town meeting, was to put together this task force and we also had a discussion or were going to have a discussion on whether or not to have one task force for the public safety evaluation for both fire EMS and for police or two separate ones.
May I make a couple of suggestions?
You certainly may.
I would put anything relative to the police department on hold for a while, let the new chief come on board, let him review...
Or her.
Or her, no, it's gonna be he. I can tell you, the next police chief's gonna be a he, unless you don't take my appointment. I apologize.
I wouldn't make promises of that sort. All kinds of things can change in the next few months.
No females apply for the job at this time, so...
Doesn't mean both female won't take it.
Really?
Really?
Well, I won't be giving you a name of females.
So back to the issue.
Thanks for the change between now and then.
Yeah, that's true. So I would wait before you knew anything.
I understand your point, I think the town manager brings up a very, very valid point.
With regards to the fire department, I think that's a more pressing issue that we should get going on now, so if I may make a suggestion, I would like the board to authorize me to advertise for interested people to serve on this task force and a minimum, the fire chief, should be on the task force, obviously. So I would like to put that out there and then start thinking about coming up with a charge for the task force.
How many members?
And bring that back, well, that'd be part of the charge.
But wait a minute.
Do we not need a charge before we ask people to sign off?
Well, it's, well, you're right, you're right, Allison, I'm sorry, I put the cow before the horse, but I'd like to come back with a charge in the next couple of weeks in working with the fire chief, draft a charge, bring it back to you, have you sign off on it and then advertise. You're right, the charge first and then have you sign off on it.
And I...
The charge shouldn't be difficult to write based on the proposal that was brought forward by the fire chief certainly sets the criteria in many ways unless he has changed his mind since it was brought forward. The charge shouldn't be highly difficult to craft.
I agree.
And this touches on something that I have mentioned before, that I feel like it's our responsibility as a board to be involved in selecting committee members for committees and I appreciate that it's much more efficient if we kind of let Mark do the recruiting and interviewing or whatever, but I really would like there to be some way that we have input in that.
If, if I may, this is your committee, this will be your interview, your process. I'm just gonna give you a draft charge.
Okay.
And I'm just recommending at a minimum the fire chief should be on this.
Do I have a point on this one, Becky?
Yep, absolutely, this is board of selectmen's issue.
Excellent.
For what it's worth, when it does come time to do the police officers, I think that, I think the work and the analysis that will go behind these is gonna require a lot of the same skills. There're gonna be some financial analytical skills, there's gonna be some public safety skills, there's gonna be a variety of things that I think there's overlap in and I think it makes some sense to have the same group of people take on both of these tasks personally. I just wouldn't make that argument because I certainly won't be able to make it later. I think there's a real benefit to it. The fact that they're gonna be split up in terms of timing maybe makes that even easier to do.
Well, we certainly can consider that and I agree with you, Jack, on this one, very much so.
Okay, so I'll get that back to the board and I don't have any update on union things tonight, so that concludes the town manager's report.
You don't want to update us on your meeting of today or not?
No, I do not.
Understood. Thank you. All right, liaison reports.
So there was a nonprofit council meeting today?
How'd it go, Jack?
It went, blink of an eye.
So what we are, there was some potential ways of misunderstanding the invitation or the response, in any case, it was not a large turnout, however, the decision was that we should in fact look for a date before the beginning of summer to meet again and really put a push on inviting people to attend for the purpose of making a decision about is this a useful concept and how to continue it in a way that is useful if so. So I'm gonna work with Don on sending an invitation out and maybe creating some wording and also maybe go back to the original people who were invited the first time who declined to participate just to see if they would come.
I have a quick update. Our new neighbors in town, N E S S P, also known as the Hindu temple, have been working with myself, Jack initially, but then myself and Tom Delaney, who is both tree warden and the DPW director. And for all the trees that were cut down for the creation of that building, the Hindu temple wants to make a donation to the town of Rotten. And what they want to do is they want to replace as many trees as possible of large caliber size. So the process has just begun, they purchased the first two trees that are gonna be going in, they'll be going at the Williams barn, they're two sugar cone maples, which is a dwarf variety of sugar maple. And they got the game going a little late, so they couldn't order all the trees they were going to order, but they will be ordering another dozen or so for the fall for planting and have a commitment to follow through with this for the next 10 years. And Tom Delaney's trying to figure out where he's gonna put all these trees. So, and we suggested that he reach out to, or the temple reach out to the Groton School, to LA as well, along the public ways of course, not buried within their campus too deeply, but so they can be enjoyed, as well as the Groton Dunceville Regional School District as well, to see if they can aid in the planting of the trees. So it's a very generous contribution and I think they should be acknowledged for their goodwill to the community.
Sounds like a really lovely idea, I think they should also perhaps coordinate or reach out to the friends of the tree ward, because they keep a running tally, I think, of good places to put trees.
I did want to follow up on the nonprofit council, but I mean, this is a reasonable segue, this is actually an outcome of the nonprofit council, the effort to have some of the nonprofits try to bring, give something back to the community. And this was an idea that the temple and Josh and I came up with during a sit-down when they were looking at things that they would like to give back. One other thing with regard to outcomes of the nonprofit initiative is, Mark, there's a, perhaps you can describe the project that we're working with the private schools on for stormwater runoff?
Yeah, we're in the process of working with Lawrence Academy and the Groton School to install a rain garden in the Lost Lake area to recharge the district, the water resource area there. And if it goes well, we'll probably try to install more. So Tom Delaney is working with representatives from the two schools on this project and this is definitely an outcome of the nonprofit council, this all happened, Jack came up with the idea, which was a great idea and the schools thought it was a wonderful thing to pursue.
So the concept is that some of our water quality issues are results more of stormwater runoff than they are of septic problems. And if we can tackle, let's say, one rain garden a year, over time, we might start to make a difference in terms of water quality in places like Lost Lake. This fits well with the schools because they have a community service requirement, but we may also be able to enlist them in ongoing testing and that testing would reveal the impacts or might reveal the impacts of these kinds of, this kind of work over time.
The impact certainly can be mitigated. Bob Pine, along with myself, Andrew, whose last name is escaping me, Eagle Scout, did a wonderful project over at Baby Beach to put in rain gardens and water bars and I checked it out recently, very successful. So this is a great way of controlling erosion runoff and mitigating situations like that. So, anything? We're about to adjourn, any parting words, Mr. Selectman Petropolis?
Good night.
We're adjourned.